Ubisoft Live's Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslake self-storage.com.
President and accounted for, Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Seth Simon, Vice President of the Board.
Please stand for the pledge. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Announcements of action taken in closed session. Motion to approve for stipulated expulsion contract EH-25-26-03, and a motion for suspended expulsion contract EH-2526-04. Comments from board members. Mr. Frank Crawford, Mr. Gary Criddle, Mr. Seth Simon, Mr. Oliver Taylor, Chong Yang, Mr. Seth and Fur. Thank you. Now we'll welcome comments from school site administrators, Lynn Hurst High School. Site representatives, Lynn Hurst High School, and please state your name. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Isela Martinez, and I am the ASB Treasurer for Lynn Hurst High School. Tonight, I get to share with you all what is going on at LHS. Leadership put on our welcome rally filled with fun games to welcome everyone back for another school year. We had our first home football game of the season last Friday. It was an amazing outturn at our Dean Miller Stadium. As of our new leadership, as of now, leadership is in the process of planning homecoming. Now for cheer. Lynn Hurst Cheer attended cheer camp at Gray Wolf Lodge, put on by Varsity and United Spirit Association, where two of our cheerleaders, Jackie Mayfield and Leah Mayfield and Jackie Lopez, earned the All-American Title and are invited to march in the New Year's Day Parade in Rome, Hawaii, Disney World in Florida, and/or the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. Now for FFA. Lynn Hurst FFA is excited to welcome two new agricultural teachers, FFA advisors this year, Mr. Jacob Jungar and Mrs. Taylor Bisby. We were able to add two new agriculture pathways this year, agricultural leadership and floral design. The FFA Officer Team recently attended our three-day Officer Retreat in Strawberry Valley, where we engaged in leadership, workshops, team-building activities, and planned for our new year. We also attended a three-day Superior Region FFA Chapter Officers Leadership Conference in Nevada City, where we further planned out our year and developed our leadership skills and abilities through training from the regional and state FFA Officers. This Thursday, FFA has an activity at lunchtime to give members a chance to learn about FFA opportunities and get an ice cream as well. Lynn Hurst FFA has a record number of members this year, and we are excited to share our theme and final student count with you at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marysville Charter of the Academy Arts.
Hello, my name is Miguel Silva. I'm the ASB President at MCAA. We've been having many exciting events. We just had our back-to-school dance and school night the last two days of August. They were all very exciting, a lot of parent support, and a lot of interest from seventh and eighth graders. We've also been having, we're also supposed to have a back-to-school rally, but due to our back area being torn up because of the new sprinkler systems being put up, we weren't able to have that rally unfortunately. Then we also had our senior sunrise, which was very successful. I had a lot of fun. We had a lot of participating members of the senior class. We had about 43 students, and with a 54 class number, it's very good. Unfortunately, though, we weren't able to have any senior parking spots, because as you know, we either have the gravel area or this little patch at MHS. And I would also like to thank the board for allowing us to use the space for our picture day. Without you guys, we'd have to cancel all the dance classes that day on Friday. And as a dancer and as a TA for the dance class, I'm very appreciative for you guys lending us the space for picture day. We also have Dragon Fest coming up. Dragon Fest is our talent show, and this is not competitive at all. It is there to express personal projects and things that are happening in classes, maybe like a sneak peek of the new dance, of a new drama performance, which I don't know what that is yet, but I'm very excited to share with you guys when I learn what it is. And it's just an opportunity to show off our amazing arts at their school. And we will also be, this may be a little too far, but October, October, we're going to be having, for the senior class, we want to do a night of horror, which is, we're going to do horror movies, but it's more just Halloween-themed movies, because it's kind of hard to do horror movies, because they're all rated R. And that's all I have to share for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Marysville High School.
My name is Joseph Emiliano Charles, and I'm the ASB President for Marysville High School. We've kicked off the year with a positive energy and good school culture. Discipline has gone up, and we haven't had a single fight this year. Our new system for lunch policies has been a great help with organization and things running smoothly during lunch and in the parking lot. Welcome Back Rally was amazing and had a lot of participation from each of the grades. School spirit has gone up, especially in the student section for both football and volleyball. We've been focusing on rebuilding our foundation of school pride from our student sections, connections, all the way to our rallies. And for FFA, Marysville FFA has had an excellent summer, starting with the Ubisoft Fair, where exhibitors showed and sold their livestock and ag mechanic projects. The Marysville Chapter also received a two-star recognition from the National FFA Organization. This October, 14 members will be traveling to the National FFA Convention, where seven MHS graduates will receive the American degree. We're looking forward to this year and are off to an exciting start with our first drive-through barbecue and tri-tip dinner sales closing tomorrow. Pickup is next Wednesday. Looking ahead, we're excited for more events, building student connection and engagement, including Club Rush this week and Homecoming coming up. Through these new policies and the building of our school culture, we continue to grow together as community Marysville High School. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Joseph. North and South Lynn Hurst High School.
Good evening, Mr. Reeves, Board Members and Cabinet. My name is Ken Thomas, and I'm representing North-South Lynn Hurst High School. I would like to begin with a quick recap of August. We kicked off the school year with our back-to-school night at both the North and the South campuses, each of which had a great turnout, following that we hosted senior sunnies for the class of 2026. Also, we launched a new onboard program this year designed to help brand-new students get familiar with our schools and program. Student feedback has been positive, highlighting how helpful and welcoming the experience was. Spirit Week was another highlight, bringing energy and enthusiasm while promoting a strong sense of school community and pride. This week, we will also be recognizing Suicide Prevention Week, an important time for awareness and support within our school community. Coming up students will have the opportunity to attend the Bio-Reality Simulation, a hands-on activity that builds real-world life skills. In addition, our seniors will be attending the annual Ubisoft College Information Day, a valuable chance to explore future opportunities. Thank you for the opportunity to share our school activities with you.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Board, we'd like to thank you guys for putting together the information and keeping us informed, and we look very much forward to every time you come in. So thank you for all your hard work. Opportunity for employee organizations to just the Board. Marysville Unified Teachers Association.
Just sorry to interrupt, Ms. Steegle. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to make a statement if I may. For the record, the Board cannot hear complaints about individual employees in open session. If you wish to pursue a concern regarding a staff member, the district has a formal complaint process for that purpose. And this is Gabe Simon, Deputy Superintendent, so I didn't identify myself. Thank you.
Well, Angela Steegle, President for the Marysville Unified Teachers Association. That's an interesting announcement that I'm going to get back to in just a minute. I'm going to start off with the more positive of things this evening, which is, as the Union has acknowledged before, the student representatives that come in here for our various sites are amazing young people and amazing examples of the truly phenomenal student body that we have within Marysville Joint Unified School District. And so, we would like to thank them and also acknowledge the fact that getting up here and speaking to all of you and to everybody else out that they can't see, that's a phenomenal task, and that's a big ask. And they come in here and do it every time and act like they're just old pros at it. So, a big thank you to them, and also a thank you to the teachers and the staff members that support and advise those programs. Our student government, our ASB, our student leadership, are oftentimes programs that don't get all of the acknowledgement and praise that they need and deserve with all the things they do for our campuses. There are a lot of moving parts to doing things even like a rally, or a dance, or even doing some of the promo and putting on student lunchtime activities. There are a lot of moving pieces and parts that go into that, and a lot of people who lose a lot of sleep and put a lot of hours in behind the scenes on that. And so, a big thank you to all of them, students and teachers and staff. To get to kind of the, I guess you would almost say, the elephant in the room, I think it's interesting that the district is going to come out and make a statement or a comment about, I'm assuming it has everything to do with the last meeting, and so now, I can't say anything about somebody who works here, but it's interesting that the Board President can. I was informed the last time I was up here, when I made comments in reference to a school site, Cedar Lane, needing some relief and some assistance that they are due, that they have begged and pleaded for. I was informed that, I was being unprofessional, because I was up here doing that. And I was informed also that I should talk to the people in the district. I should talk to HR. I should talk to various people. While I would like to address just that part of that comment even, I have spoken to, MUDA has spoken to no less than 10 superintendents, interim superintendents, assistant superintendents about this issue, over almost four years. I can't tell you how many times I've been in closed session and tried talking to the Board about it, but there's been at least three or four different school boards as well. Some of you have been pieces and parts of those, some of you have not. I can't begin to even fathom how it is now that suddenly there's an issue or a problem here with saying something, except for the fact that it's just to try yet again to form another way for which the teachers' union isn't able, or you're trying to limit the teachers' union's ability to stand up for our teachers and for their rights. You could try as you may, that's fine, but I also know that at the last meeting, I was informed that I was taking things personally. You're making this personal. I'm not the one who made things personal. I was also told that I was unprofessional. I'm not the one that was unprofessional. I'll tell you right now, it's pretty personal, and it's pretty unprofessional for our Board President to stoop to the level of insulting a labor leader for trying to do his or her job. And I'm not the only one who thought so. But I know we're going to be looking at some other numbers tonight. I gave you a number as far as the, you know, 10 superintendents and such. Here's another number for you. It has been 1,431 days since the first issuer complaint was brought up in regards to this person, almost four years. So I asked, "How long?" Mr. Criddle, I asked, "How long? How long do you want people to beg? How long do you want people to try to do things without having to come up here?" And there was no answer to that. But apparently, the Board and the district seems to think that it's got to be longer than 1,431 days. Well, that's fine. We'll persevere. We'll continue to do that. We'll continue to speak here and anywhere else. But also, another number just to kind of leave you with, there's 419 days to the next school board election. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Angela, thank you for your comments. Under the Brown Act, the Board cannot discuss any act on items not on the agenda, and we will refer to this matter to staff for follow-up. Thank you. Operating Engineers, Local Unit 3. California School Employees Association 326 and 648. Association of Management and Confidential Employees. Supervisory Unit. Moving on to number eight, Public Comment. Persons wishing to address the Board under public comments or specific agenda items prior to the Board taking action must complete a public comments card and place it in the basket. Speakers will be invited to the podium in order of the public comments cards, or in order of the public cards received. The public may address topics not on the agenda during this section of the agenda, or ask that they be heard during a specific agenda item. The Ralph M. Brown Act prevents the Board trustees from responding to these comments with the exception of clarifying questions. The California Government Code, Section 54954.2A, states no action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that members of a legislative body or its staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights under Section 54954.3. I believe we have a public comment card here from Ms. Erica Schlesler. Erica?
Good evening. I'm Erica Schlesler, and I'm speaking on my own behalf, not as the Vice President of the Association. Throughout this nation, school board members are taught about the Brown Act, and they are taught by the administrators of the schools, all the things that they cannot do. What doesn't get taught is what you can do, what you're responsible for doing, what your job really is. I mean, you come to meetings and you vote, but there's more to it than that. Board members tend to feel like they're not allowed to speak to labor people, to anybody, about board business. But not only can you discuss school business with the people impacted by that business, you're responsible for getting that information before you vote on issues at this level. Sometimes we see board members come and visit our sites, and they come on campus. The administrator usually does some kind of dog and pony show. They walk around, say hi, and then they're gone. You need to make a date, make several dates at the sites that you represent, and make yourself available. Tell people ahead of time that you're going to be there during lunch, before school, after school, whenever you can do it, and be open to having people ask you questions, having them give you suggestions, tell you about their experiences, so that you know what you're doing when you're voting at these meetings. Now, look back on the years of Dr. Estrani. Look at what the teachers came every meeting to tell you, you being the Board. I know some of you weren't, individuals weren't here. But we told you about her overspending. We told you about the things that she was doing that were not right. And now she's gone, and I think everybody agrees now, she was overspending. She was doing things that she shouldn't have been doing. We told you that, but you wouldn't listen. We had a vote of no confidence. It was huge, 94%. That doesn't normally happen, but she told you, "Oh yeah, that's a normal thing. People do that all the time." And you believed her. Sometime, you need to believe us. We could have saved so much money, and we could have saved so many really good employees that left because of her. About the last meeting, it was embarrassing, the remarks that were made. For the President of the Board to think that all 500 and so members were supposed to vote on one individual site issue, while sweeping away the fact that that site, the people impacted, voted 92%, no confidence. I won't mention the name, because I'm not supposed to. And then, taking it personal, like our President has nothing better to do than to just, for four years, poke it, that administrator. And then to say unprofessional. Each one of you is paid...
No, I don't believe we do. Thank you very much. Number nine, Superintendent Updates.
Hi, thank you, Gabe Simon, Deputy Superintendent. Mr. Reeves is under the weather and apologizes for not being in attendance. So in his absence, we were just talking as a cabinet the other day about how exciting it is to get on campuses and tour campuses, interact with staff, and see the wonderful things that are happening, and the kids excited about learning. And we're looking forward to a great school year. That's all I have to share.
Thank you. Number 10, Superintendent, 10.1, Approval of the August 26, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any noted corrections, Board? If not, do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Gary Criddle, first on a motion to approve, and a second, Mr. Seth Simon. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10.2, Approval of Consent Agenda Items. We'll now approve the Consent Agenda Items, Items 12.1 through 14.5. The order, is there any item that the Board would like to pull for further clarification? Okay? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items, 12.1 through 14.5? Mr. Crawford has a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second? Mr. Taylor. Mr. Oliver Taylor on the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, None. Number 26, New Business, None. Number 17, Business New, Personal, 17.1, Approve the Job Description and Position, Nutritional Services Warehouse Lead. Dr. Gabe Simon.
We're going to have Executive Director Ashi Vedi take this one. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. So, this agenda item, some things to note on this. It's, we're requesting the Board approve the new job description for this position in the Nutrition Services Department, and this will be a cost savings to the district's cafeteria fund. This position is being realigned to better match the needs of the department, and the salary range will be adjusted from range 35 to range 27 with the adjustment of the duties. So, we're looking for approval for the new job description, so they can fly that and hopefully find the right candidate.
Does the Board have any questions at all? Then, do I have a motion to approve? Okay. Mr. Fur on the motion, and do I have a second? Seth Simon, second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. No. Number 18, New Business, Business Services. It's Jen Presaglio.